Commissioner Schmidt, can you hear us?
I can hear you barely, but good enough.
Is your volume all the way up on your phone?
Well, I'm on a computer right now, not on the phone. I'll put it there. Okay, I can hear you.
Okay, great. So first thing, Commissioner Schmidt's joining us via Zoom. And I was expecting Commissioner Aaron's, but... Are you guys still getting Commissioner Aaron's? Can you give him a call and see if he's having issues? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sherri, you call the roll.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. All right, now move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I would so move.
Thank you.
So move, Madam Chair.
I'll second.
We've got a motion by Schmidt, a second by Poppins. Any public comment on the consent agenda items? All right, if not... Sherri, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. We'll move on to regular business. We have board action to approve and authorize the chair to execute a proposal for independent fee evaluation regarding the airport's North Apron reconstruction project. Who's handling that? Joe?
Good morning, Commissioners. This is utilizing...
Make sure you're talking into your mic, because I know for Schmidt on the phone, it's very hard to hear. Commissioner Aaron's, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
All right, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is utilizing the federal funds that are available to us. I believe it's ninety-five percent coverage for us to utilize federal funds to get our apron started at the airport.
All right. Commissioners, anybody have questions for Joe? All right, if not, I'd consider a motion.
I would so move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Commissioner Schmidt. Is there any public input on this agenda item? All right. Any further discussion? Sherri, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Next item on our agenda, annual conference with commission and director of equalization. Good morning, Carla.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commission. Carla Gosin, Director of Equalization. Per SDCL 10314, today is the annual conference with the commission and the director of equalization. Traditionally, we have discussed office statistic, appeal numbers, and then open it up for any questions. So what has changed in 2022 versus 2023 assessments? Another strong market year, that's what changed. Countywide, we increased assessments 15%. Some locations saw a larger increase. A few things that affect values was material and labor increased. So we increased our cost manual by 10%. Again, the market was strong. Many adjustments were made for market factors throughout Lincoln County to get to our target range of 90%. It was interesting to see some comparisons of properties that have sold then resold within the 2020-22 statistic year. Some appeals during the next few weeks will be presenting to you. I just purchased my property in 2020 or 2021, and now I'm over market value. Or I haven't made any improvements to my property. Why did my value increase? The reality is, one could have bought a property in 2020 and 2021 and turned around and made a profit in '22. The market was just that strong, and the demand was there. I've often told folks that you don't need to make any improvements to see any changes in your assessed value. The market will help indicate changes. I do have a few examples of properties that have sold and resold. I've showed these properties in Sioux Falls during the local boards of equalization and also during my informative session that I had with public. The first property is a new-built, new construction, built in 2009. No improvements in 2020 or 2021. They purchased the property in November of 2021 for $590,000 and then turned around and sold it again in April of 2020 for... Excuse me. Excuse me, let me back up. So they purchased it in April of 2020 for $500,000 and then again in November of 2021 for $590,000. That was an 18-month turnaround date, or 1% per month. There were no improvements. It was a brand-new construction. There would have been no improvements needed. Can we get this Zoom so it shows all of the information, please? Thank you. This is a 2,000-built home. White laminate counters, original cupboards, white appliances, same tile. If not the original carpet, the carpet is standard to the quality of the home. It sold in July of 2021 for $302,000. And then again in May of 2022 for $355,000. It was a nine-month turnaround period, or 1.9% per month. There were no building permits. There were no improvements made to the house. That was just a market. Here's an interesting one. This sold three times in the last two years. Another built 2,000, original counters and cupboards, newer appliances, same tile, original flooring are standard to the quality of the home. It sold in July of 2020 for $192,500. And then again in December of 2021 for $229,000. That was an increase of 18.96% increase in 16 months, or 1.19% per month market adjustment. So then again in 2022, they turned around and sold it for $279,900. So that was a six-month turnaround phase, or 3.7% per month. This tells us that our market was strong. Market was indicating values were increasing at least 1% to 2% per month. Other changes to values themselves, other than changes to value themselves, we also changed what information we are going to supply to you during boards of equalization. I believe the information is better. It's more information, more property tells. You'll see the complete valuation and tax history in the last five years, not only on the subject property, but also the the three comparables that we are supplying to you, more pictures, sketches. And as we proceed through these changes in the information that we're supplying, please, suggestions are always welcome. In your shared folder, it will have an example of what an appeal will look like during this appeal season. It'll be very similar to what you've seen in Civic Clerk last year. We will start with the assessor recommendation, which will include the subject page, the three comparables, and the recommendation itself. The second set of documents will be the PT-17. That's the PT-17 that the appellant submitted to you. And then the next set of documents, it will be the written notice or other documentations that the appellant wants you to see. Any questions so far?
Anybody have any questions?
Carla, I have a question.
Yes.
The article that was in Sunday's paper, you know, kind of paralleled the two counties between Minnehaha and Lincoln. But what struck out in me was that Minnehaha, maybe it was a misprint, said that they anticipated, you know, under 100 appeals, and we were at 300 or 400. So is there... Can you explain why that would be? I had people call on that, wanting to know why there are so few on one side and so many on the other. Now, maybe that was just an interpretation of the article? But can you address that a little bit, please?
So I had the opportunity to be at the local boards of equalization in Sioux Falls Monday, the 20th of March, and that's where we presented to the board any corrections or administrative changes. I don't know if this is a direct correlation with the question, but Lincoln County presented five corrections or administrative changes, and Minnehaha County had 700.
Too bad that didn't get in the paper, Carla.
Yes, so I do, I would like to bring this up, and I don't know if it's relevant to anything other than my peace of mind. So Pennington County, which is the second-largest county in the state, obviously, they had over 600 appeals to their boards of equalization this year. County Board will be hearing over 400, and that was yesterday's numbers, and the deadline is today. I also heard from our county auditor yesterday, who was in correspondence with the Davison County auditor. I'll share that information. They have over 300 appeals. So I don't know why the number-one county in the state only has that number, other than they made some changes internally that didn't go through an appeal process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right.
Also, the information that I supplied for the commission this year is our statistical numbers. So each year, we analyze our sales to indicate what type of market changes needed to be implemented for the 2023 assessment year. So overall, we had 3,619 property transfers throughout the Lincoln County, and that is a 7% decrease from 2021 property transfers. Of those property transfers, 336 were agricultural transfers. Forty-nine of those transfers were good sales. They were open-market sales that we are used to do our analysis. The median ratio for agricultural properties, so the assessment versus the sale price, is at 20.9%. So what that means is agricultural land is only being assessed at 20.9% of its market value, which that is typical, because farmland is valued based on productivity. So our non-ag transfers, we had 3,283 non-agricultural transfers. Of those, 1,325 were good arms-length transactions. We were coming in at the very beginning of our racial study at 70.69%, which means our assessments were at 70.69% of the market value. State law says we have to be at least 85%, so the target is between 85 and 100%. 9% of those 1,325 sales that we reviewed, 9% of those were over 100%, while 82% were under 85. That is a hard number to digest when I look at things statistically. 82% of those property transfers' assessed values were under, 82% were under 85%. So what do we do? We do a lot of analysis. We spend months on it. Ethan does a very good job on all the statistical measures. And at the very end, our final numbers after reappraisal, any market adjustments, we now are only sitting at 38% of those properties' transfers are under 85%. 12% are over 100%, and then 50% are at our target level. Okay, keep going on. So those are the numbers. So the countywide reappraisal is completed. So this year was the final year we applied those valuations. That was our southernmost part of the county. It took us eight years. I had in my mind five to six years to complete it. We did encounter COVID, which slowed us down slightly. So what we have on the docket for 2023, for our 24-assessment year, we have a cost manual update from Vanguard, and then we're also going to do a complete land study. Our upcoming workshops and conferences, SDAO Conference is in June of 2023 here in Sioux Falls. Our very own Austin Priehheim, who is an appraiser in the equalization office, is the president of our association this year. So he's hosting the annual conference, which will be in Sioux Falls. Our annual assessor school is in September, and that is located in Rapid City. Staffing numbers stayed the same. Building permits, we inspected over 3,000 building permits this year. That was slightly higher than last year. With all of the media and the newspaper, it sounds like building constructions are down. So I see a lot of remodels and a lot of additions and very few new construction. Currently, we have 116 appeals going to county or consolidated boards. Forty-eight of those appeals are consolidated, and 68 are county. So our consolidated board is the city of Canton. So there's 48 appeals as of me walking downstairs today, and county has 68. We expect that number to grow. I believe we saw 30 appeals come in just yesterday alone. So there's a lot of folks that are going to wait until the deadline. One thing that I did want to share with the commission, I do want to give kudos to Ethan Heiliger. He's one of our appraisers upstairs. As we go through this appeal season, we're constantly talking to appellants and trying to help them understand what the assessments are. And a lot of folks ask for comparables for those properties and what that means. I would like to read a statement that he issued to all of his folks. I think it explains our process very well. So this is a standard statement that our appraisers send out, thanks to Ethan. He's helped us write this up. So he states, "As you know, the market in '22 was rather high. Our job is to be as close to market as possible. We look at sales data every year. Our statistical year right now is November 1, 2021, to October 31, 2022, and must make percent adjustments according to where our values are versus the market." So we want to be as close to market as possible. I would like to add that we do not strictly use three sales to compare homes. We are mass appraisers and run our values versus all sales in the general area. This analysis considers the age, square footage, and other factors verifying we are not too high and we're not too low on our assessed values. So for an example, when we submit our appeal information to you, we look at the three sales that we feel that are the most comparable to the appellant. Those aren't the three sales that we use to come up with our market adjustments. There were the 82 in Canton alone, not the three, the 82. So we analyze the entire area. So that's confusing to folks, because they see those three sales, and they're like, you know, "Those sales aren't comparable to mine. Mine's smaller. Mine's older." You know, but it's not just, it's to show the market range of like properties. Since most of you, or a couple of you, attended the district meeting, I wanted to share with you, Robin Carlson did a very good job on explaining the factors, and I wanted to share the factors that are within our district. So at the end of all of our statistical analysis, Lincoln County was coming in at 87.7% of market. So that was our level of assessment or median ratio. And you can see of our eight districts, or our eight counties within the districts, many of them just got to the 85% tile. Minnehaha County did get to 89%. During the conversation at the district meeting, Robin or Ms. Carlson from the Department of Revenue indicated 13 counties in the state had a factor of one or greater when it was determining the taxable value. So some counties actually saw their taxable value was higher than their assessed value. Some counties were equal, so they had a 1% factor. So their assessed value and their taxable value were exactly the same. Because if counties can't reach this 85%, which is our lowest here, then the state will apply a factor to your taxable level to get to that 85%. Also, I just wanted to show, folks, you'll hear that the market is softening. You know, we've heard that through media the last few months. And I understand why some of those folks are saying that, because properties aren't selling as fast. They're not selling in 24 to 48 hours. It's taking 30 to 60 days. That's our normal turnaround rate. And when I look at whether the market is softening, these are the numbers that I looked at. So I am giving you a preview of what's to come. So in Lincoln County, November 1, 2022, through March 31, 2023, our assessment level went from 87.7 down to 85.81. That's telling me the market is not softening. Our assessments are still lower, and they're dropping at 2% in that first five months. Countywide, 80... I'm not sure. Oh, I broke out commercial and residential. But our townships are coming in only at 78.42%. That's telling me right now, we're already having to make market adjustments out there. Canton's at 81.45, which dropped from 90% down to 81%. That's saying our assessed values are still too low in comparison to what properties are selling for. I broke it down all the way. The only one that's keeping us strong is Sioux Falls and Harrisburg. We were pretty aggressive when we were making our market adjustments up there. You know, Lenox, small towns are, I mean, our assessments are still too low. I tried to cover as much as I can, you know, during this. Is there any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Carla?
I have questions, but in lieu of trying to keep moving today, I'll take some time and visit with her.
All right. Anybody else? All right, any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, thank you, Carla.
Thank you.
Move on to item three on our agenda, board action to approve the purchase of office equipment for the commission administrative officer and the director of equalization suite.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Due to people, I am presenting this on behalf of John Rambo. So we wanted to approve the purchase of glass wall and costing, so add the cost for that. And the materials are listed in the requested action. We're asking for a glass wall to be installed, and as well as a desk and chair. And then in the director of equalization suite, for a glass wall and then additional materials. And that totaling is attached to the requested action as well. We're looking at $12,000 for the commission office A, excuse me, and then $7,000 for the director of equalization suite. The goal and the reason why we're bringing this is to create a private office space for the new commission administrative officer position, as well as the consolidated director of equalization suite. And so the glass walls will help us do that and create different office spaces. And then we also need desks and chairs for that additional office as well.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions? All right, is there a motion?
I'll so move.
I would so move, Madam Chair.
I'll for a second.
All right, I've got a motion from Schmidt, a second from Poppins. Is there any public input on this agenda item? All right, any discussion amongst the commission? All right, Sherri, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, next item, board action to approve the purchase of a used Mastik machine. Good morning, Terry.
Good morning. I am requesting to get approval to purchase a used Mastik machine from Brock White. Cost on this unit is $35,000.
Deal of the century?
Yeah, new, they're probably about 70.
Okay, all right. Heard the request. Anybody have any questions for Terry?
Terry?
Yes.
Can I ask a dumb question? What does this machine do?
So this is like a patching machine. Basically, we get blocks of material. They're cold. We throw these in there. It heats it up, comes out in a liquid, and we can pour it out on the road. This is more for patching holes, larger holes in the roadway, not for like crack sealing. Although we have used this stuff when we do crack sealing, you'll notice on some of them where everything starts tipping in the middle and it starts cupping out really bad on the roadway. We will use this material to go in and fill that hole about a foot wide on that whole crack, but...
Thank you.
Terry, just to confirm, our bid laws allow us to purchase, for the record, equipment like this without going to bid?
Yeah, up to $50,000.
Very good, thank you.
All right, heard the request. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second by Commissioner Schmidt. Any discussion amongst the commission? Any public input? All right, Sherri, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have board action to declare a surplus, appoint an appraisal committee for and authorize requests for sealed bids.
So I have two parcels that are in Hudson that we've taken tax deed for, and we want to put them up for sealed bids.
Okay, so we need to declare them a surplus. We need an appraisal committee. Any volunteers for an appraisal committee?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is this property near what we put a crew together to evaluate last week?
This is down by Hudson, or in Hudson.
So no.
No.
Oh, okay.
But you want to be on that committee, Commissioner Schmidt?
I'll volunteer.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes, Madam Chair. With that look, I will volunteer.
Thank you. I need one more. I'm... You got it, Commissioner Aaron's?
Yep.
Okay, thank you so much.
So we're going to have these three people for both parcels, correct?
Yes.
With that motion, I'll move to declare surplus and appoint... Can I do that, Madam Auditor?
Yes.
And appoint these three people to appraise the property.
And authorize a request for sealed bids to sell.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got a motion from Poppins. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Any public input on this agenda item? All right, any discussion? All right, Sherri, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
All right, next, board action to approve an abatement of taxes for twenty twenty-two payable twenty twenty-three in the amount of three hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents on a property in Canton Township.
Yep, so it was um, a parcel that was taken over by the state of South Dakota, parcel number oh nine eight four nine nineteen A one hundred. It was purchased by the state of South Dakota, eleven eight, twenty twenty-two.
All right, heard the request, is there a motion?
I'll offer the motion.
So move.
I'll second.
Second.
I, all right, I got a motion from Poppins, I got a second from Commissioner Aaron's. Um, any discussion amongst the commission? Any public input on this agenda item? All right, Sherry, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Now we have our opportunity for public comment for any items not on the agenda, is there anyone that wants to come up and make public comment today? All right, I don't see any takers, any commissioner reports?
Madam Chair, I'll give a brief, uh, last Tuesday, headed out to Deadwood, um, spoke with the FAA, um, I thought it was a beneficial trip, although short. Um, I think it wa- it struck a point, uh, that the county is very interested in some activities that um, we've been working on for a long time with uh, the airport. Um, and informed them that we're in the process of uh, acquiring a full-time manager and a few other things concerning the airport. Um, it had a, we had a thirty-minute time slot to visit with them. Given the room was extremely warm when we got there, I chose not to irritate them by extending it and made sure we were out of there in thirty minutes and, and uh, we have a meeting coming up with them uh, in April uh, via Zoom to con- continue that conversation, so I'm makes uh, eager to get that and uh, hopefully be able to get some good information from them at that time, so, thank you.
Thank you for that, any other commissioners have reports today? All right, if not, then I need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll offer the motion.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Aaron's, I got a motion and a second to go into executive session. Uh, Sherry, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes, and that was uh, to be under SDCL one twenty-five one and sub four and sub three.
Madam Chair?
Does anybody disagree with that?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Schmidt?
Do we use um, a different Zoom when we go into executive session?
You will use a different one, do you not have it?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
We'll join you later.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, it's my pleasure to give you a vote to come out of executive session.
Can I get a second?
I will offer the second.
Sherry, we call the roll.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes, and then I need a motion to adjourn.
So move, Madam Chair?
Second.
Thank you, Sherry.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.